We see it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looked like everybody came together.
Still going to the gym Fridays.
Yeah.
Elaborating. I go every morning, seven o'clock.
Committee to order, Shelley, can you do roll call please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. District one, Councilman Rios is excused. District two, Councilman Pastor.
Here.
District three, Councilman Lethem.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley is excused. Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Please join me in prayer. Lord, we ask for your blessing and your guidance. Over today's special council meeting, as we go through some very important topics. We ask you for your continued support and blessing over our staff. As they continue working on all the recovery efforts. And all the time they have put in, in the past two months. We ask for those guidance and blessing and patience for those residents. And businesses that continue to recover from this disaster. And we ask that, starting tomorrow, that we have a successful first Friday. And successful events throughout December. To bring normalcy hopefully to our community again, amen.
Amen.
Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start with presentations. And A will be federal declaration update staff.
Connie, do you want to turn that podium back so you face the council? But be careful, you got to pivot from the left because you're pull the plug out.
Why didn't you go out?
Maybe scoot it down towards council. More, there.
I probably a little bit have to turn this that way and you'll be okay.
Little bit more.
We're only kidding.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. So you're, I'm here to present about the federal declaration. That went up from the Department of Emergency Management and Military Affairs. On October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seventeen hundred hours. And then on October twenty-seventh, about seventeen hundred hours. The White House formally accepted that declaration. Now, what that means is it's still sitting on the president's desk. Secretary of State is the one who accepts these items. And so I'm sure that they're investigating it. So your federal declaration dollar amount is over thirty-three thousand dollars. Thirty-three million dollars, pardon me. So they're probably going through each and every one of those items. And that would include sixteen plus million dollars for the sewer system. That would also include the demo for the Silver King Building. That would also include demo for the Rogue Building. And the future fire station site. And then it would also include, Danny, what is, what was, oh, the bridges.
Repairs of the bridges, not replacement.
Yeah, that, it's not replacement, that's repairs. So the dollar amounts for the repairs. I entertain questions if you like.
Questions.
You said that was, excuse me.
Question, Mayor.
Thirty-three million from FEMA, that's what's coming in?
So, so, yeah, I'm glad you asked that. Because then this gives me the opportunity to explain to you what FEMA really means, okay? So, so if this declaration is signed by the president. Then yes, it goes to FEMA. And that means we get a lot, we get access to a lot more dollars. But we also get access to a lot more federal entities. So DEMA is going to house it. But then that allows other entities to come in and take things out of the stack that were damaged. And for instance, NCRS, we would have a lot more dollar amount for NCRS. Available if that federal deck is signed. So other federal agencies, that would also give us the right to have the buyout program for our residents. Other, other items through RCAC would be federal dollars would then be available for our residents. So in, in one instance, we, yes, we really do want this signed. Because we really want, it will help our residents more. For us at the city, it would help us with our infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor. Question, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah. So you've set the, this documentation in in October. What about all the costs we've generated as a result of the flooding up to and including today? Have you sent those numbers in?
Those numbers, those numbers haven't been sent in, but they've been compiled and then they can be added to.
Oh, they can be added to, alright.
Because we, what our job is, is to provide narrative, provide quotes. And, and what we have to do is we have to tie it back to that original flooding event. And so as long as we can tie it back to that original flooding event. Then it would be reimbursable. And since I mentioned reimbursable, I want to let you know that at this moment. Everything's reimbursable at seventy-five percent. And the city has to provide twenty-five percent. If the federal declaration gets signed, then it's reimbursable at ninety percent. And then the city has ten percent ownership.
So when you say that though, if we're getting seventy-five from the state, it's not going to, ninety percent, it's going to be fifteen percent from the federal then, ninety total?
Right, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So, the other, yeah, what was it, Chief?
Just, just some clarification on that. The way that, the way that cost breakdown would go would then, it would go to, it would go to seventy-five percent federal. Fifteen percent state, ten percent local.
I'm glad you answered.
So the federal would pick up seventy-five percent?
Yeah. And Gary just might as well just stay there. So, and, and Mayor, just a couple of things, just to, for, for as much clarity as I can bring. DEMA represents state funds, FEMA represents federal funds. And both of these funds are for public infrastructure costs. That are not insured or covered by, covered by something else. The best example is the county had a bunch of road damage. But there are other funds available to repair those road damages. And, and so this has to be stuff where there is no, they're the payer of last resort. And, and that's a lot of the documentation, is that there's no one else is responsible, there, there's nobody else to go to. The, the other thing is that it does bring advantages to our citizens and businesses. For between five and fifty thousand if we get to FEMA. But, but they're very, it's a very com- not convoluted, complex. And, and strict reporting requirement, application requirement. And it probably makes what we're going through now look like chopped liver. So people are, are not, people who don't want, people get too excited that they're going to be able to get a bunch of money from FEMA. For, for the public, if you have the documentation and, and everything is there, you can get that money. But a lot of people get frustrated with the process. The only last other thing I wanted to say is, and Danny, correct me if I'm wrong. We, if we get the FEMA, the, the federal declaration. We'll have access to municipal small business loans. Not, it's really not small business loans, but a municipal borrowing fund. Because, because we'll talk in the, later in this meeting, we'll talk about cash flow. And we have, everything is reimbursable, so we pay the cost, then we get the money back. And it's questionable about the time flow. But, but that's something that they can help us with is, is, you know, allowing us a source of funding until we get our reimbursement. Gary, do you want to add something? There, there needs to be some clarification for, for the, on the FEMA side with the FEMA declaration. Is, there's, there's two programs. You have the public assistance program and you have the.
Individual.
The individual assistance programs. You can be approved for a public assistance declaration and not get the individual assistance declaration. It's not a, it's not a given that you're going to get both at any, upon a signing of a declaration. You could, you could get one or the, or the other, or you could get both.
And which one is the one that covers our residents, that the individual one?
Yeah.
Assistance program. So we can get our, so.
We could get a public assistance, but not an individual assistance.
So the ninety percent coming to reimbursable that, that we're getting, that is.
If we get it.
Public infrastructure, that has none, that brings nothing to our residents.
That, that is, that's the, under the, that's under the, the public assistance program. So that's, that, that is not, that's not private citizens.
What about, what about our business side? Our business district, is that coming?
Business, no.
Unless it's, that'd be individual, I guess.
The, the one plus, I, I want to give a shout out to Small Business Administration. They have been able, our residents have been able through them to secure up to this point in time. About three and a half million in Small Business Administration loans. The public finally stepped up and made application. And everything is great about that particular program. In my book, that's the one federal program that's here and making action. And I'm really pleased with them. And we let the, the federal delegation know that the other day. Very successful program being utilized by our businesses and the individuals. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The, the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to let you guys know that we do have communications with RCAC. Which has a specific section of their group. That is dedicated to disaster recovery for communities. And they are just waiting for the go, they're waiting for the signature to have a workshop for individual assistance and business assistance.
But RCAC is only floodways and not like.
No, no, this is something completely different. This is people who have worked for FEMA previously.
Individual RCAC.
And they will help them through that paperwork and through the minutia of getting those things done. So I just wanted to let you know that that is something that's happening in the background as well.
Thank you.
Chief, on the, on the individual, when you talk about that then, if we don't get assigned the individual, does that do away with the buyout program then?
No, because, I, that's a NRCS program.
Okay.
And, and so, and that's, that's designed for a whole different, a whole different purpose. It's for, for that waterway stabilization, for, for getting, yeah, for removing, removing the. Removing the, the threat to property and stuff that's there by, by buying out that property. For the purposes of, of returning it back to, to just raw land of, of some kind.
One more question, Connie. So we said we're, we put in for thirty-three million with, with FEMA. So, and what is this DEMA amount that we put in for, and is it the same or how do, how does that work down?
Yeah, so, so just because, just so that there's not confusion. So we had a state of emergency and then the county declared a state of emergency. And then the state declared a state of emergency. So that's the Department of Emergency Management and Military Services. That's who we're dealing with, better known as DEMA. So that is who we're dealing with. So because we met the dollar threshold on the federal declaration. Then DEMA assists us and sends our dollar amount up with a formal ask for a federal declaration. And the amount, I, I have the exact amount right now. It's thirty-three million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars.
And that would just city?
And that's just the city of Globe.
Now, if that money comes through, does it have to go through the county before it's a city?
No, it's, it is the City of Globe's federal declaration, it's not through the county. And the, the, so, so both DEMA and FEMA have similar, similar guidelines. In, in dollar amount, the dollar amounts and how everything is spent. The, like Chief said, that the one thing that happens is that then it's ninety, ten percent. And it's federal seventy-five percent. And then the state fifteen percent. And then we would be responsible for ten percent of what is spent.
So the ten percent, will that come out, can we take that out of the money that we're going to be receiving?
Okay, so, so here, here's the technical part, okay? So we do not get money directly, it's all reimbursable. It's a grant, so it's all reimbursable funds. We have to spend the money first on the project. And then we'll, each quarter, we'll put in for the reimbursement.
So we spend a hundred dollars and they reimburse ninety total and we're just out the, the ten. But it's really, it, it's really important to realize, this is money on the backside reimbursement. We have to fund it fully before we, before anything happens.
Paul, we don't have an idea what we spend in, are we spending, we're spending our fund balance? Not the, our general fund balance, but we're also spending enterprise fund balance?
No, we're not spending the fund balance, we're spending the city cash. Okay, so this is money that is going to, the, the fund balance is money that is designated for, by council for special use. But, and, and we're following that plan. But we have a special line item for areas that we're going to spend and it's going to be reimbursed at a certain time. And so we're spending down the, the cash that, that we have out of our reserves. But we're not taking it and transferring it from the fund balance out. Because it will be repaid, so it will be booked as a, a negative for now, but, but it's not a, a net loss. And we're going to go into a little bit more detail when we get to the spending. I think it'll be better context, we have some bills that we have to pay and we're prepared to talk a little bit about that when we get to those bills. So I don't want to cross over with this conversation, but, but we're, we will be talking about that. It's, yeah.
One more question there?
Go ahead.
I remember right, Connie, when we first started these discussions several weeks ago. You had mentioned FEMA has a habit of taking the total number and cutting it in half, just, that's their routine. Has that happened or is that going to happen or they're going to give us?
At this point.
Or they're looking at the full amount for us?
So at this point, the full amount went up from DEMA to the federal declaration. So, and FEMA is a department, okay? So the federal declaration is that. It's a declaration that where DEMA is asking the president to sign off on our declaration to give it to FEMA. And so then, then the, the fun part begins where they, they start working with us. So we'll get an official monitor. So somebody that comes out, looks at the site, you know, everything. And then we are responsible to tie every, all damage that we claimed in that thirty-three million. To the, the dollar amounts. So we have to prove and show and have quotes. And if the quotes have increased, then we have to prove that modality as well.
And let me answer it in a different way. They would not, FEMA or DEMA would not say, oh, we're only paying half. What they're going to say is, it, does it or does it not qualify? We have stuff that we know is going to qualify, the, the sewer bill, the, the sewer repair bill that we're going to start the process on. Is absolutely sewer damage and public infrastructure that, that needs to happen. Now, there, we're going to submit for the cost of relocating the propane tanks. But that one, that one may have some doc, not documentation, but qualification issues. Now, we're, we're going to try and we're going to submit it. But that one is an example, maybe one that may get cut. And so it's not a percentage cut, but it's the qualifying. We submitted thirty-three million, is it thirty-three million?
Thirty-three million.
But you may see that whittled down as they disallow certain things. And it wouldn't be by percentage, it would be as by bill.
And because those tanks don't belong to us, those costs of damage we can't use?
It, it's, I, I don't want to go deep into that conversation about, about the tanks right now. I, I mean, we wouldn't have been moving them if it wasn't for the flood. But we're in, in essence, we're assisting a private company.
Yeah.
And that nuance gets lost at the federal level. So leave it at that.
So if we were to read the cost, we could put a lien on the property, just like we do with anything else?
Oh, we, that would be another conversation.
Cover ourselves, man.
Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, yay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. So item two is consent counter. Matters listed, consent counter, consider be routine of enacted one motion, one vote, publicly, items designated in the asterisk. Prior to consideration, consent agenda. The mayor will ask whether any members of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and their staff may remove any item for separate consideration also. Item A is consideration to waive section two dash ten, two dash four dash ten A. Prior discussion ruled to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Item B, consideration to accept number GO two-six-five-six-zero-five-zero-seven-two grant award. From Arizona Complete Health for twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase CO2 and smoke detectors. Received through GL two-zero-four-two-zero-eight-zero-one-zero. Item C is consideration to accept the donation of holiday lighting and decoration services by Christmas Light Decorations CLD. Do we have anybody from the public, from staff or council wishing to remove any for separate consideration?
Mayor, we would like to pull item two C. Just to give a brief explanation as to why there's a bunch of elves and bucket trucks all over the city.
Melissa?
Yep.
Melissa, do you want to?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus two C.
Second? Motion second for approval of.
Item two A.
Or consent agenda minus item C. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion passed. Item C.
Okay, so the Christmas Light Decorators is the company out, outside right now with bucket trucks and everything. They had a conversation with a resident. That resident brought up our news articles that were all over the place during the flood. And they really just wanted to do something that was in their wheelhouse to help us. They have decided to set up, break down and donate a ton of Christmas decorations. To help bring hope and joy back into our community for the holidays. All at no cost, no anything for us, just, just in the spirit of the holidays, so.
That's amazing.
Yes.
Really takes the burden off our public works too.
Amazingly, yes.
John was not arm wrestling him for it, so.
If you have any questions, I can try to answer.
So they're going to take, so they're setting everything up? And then once the holidays are over, they'll take it down and take it back to wherever they can think?
Yes, yeah.
So they didn't donate anything?
No, they're just donating temporarily for the holiday season, yeah.
The donation of services, the, the labor to put it up and.
And they, and they've got the tree up in the front of the courthouse and it looks really nice.
Yeah, there's about twenty-one of them out there right now with a couple bucket trucks. Getting it all done in one day, which I think is amazing.
Maybe they'll donate the tree to.
That's what I was going to say, yeah.
We did ask for a invoice, not an invoice, but a, a list of what it would cost if we were to look at that and.
It would be interesting to see the total cost.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so Melissa, the, and, and we did this in coordination with, with other members of the downtown.
It was an incredible effort, it's just so much collaboration. We've had the Downtown Association, the Chamber, love where you live. I know I'm going to forget somebody and I hope that that's okay. But everybody came to the table, not once but twice, to really bring this hope for the holidays theme for December to life. And it's just been incredibly uplifting, so.
And Melissa, say the name of the company again?
Christmas Light Decorators.
They're out of Phoenix?
Yeah, I think their main office is in Mesa, but they do other municipalities. So I know they've done Scottsdale, they've done Phoenix, they've done Tempe.
Costly.
They're, I know that they helped with the Super Bowl, like they're, they're professionals, they know what they're doing, so.
How cool.
I would just like to commend Melissa and her staff and all her staff for bringing this to, you know, to bringing it forward. And I, and you're just listening to the collaboration that I've heard, you know, the Chamber, the Downtown Association to, to really make it happen. I think this will really help us hopefully move forward and.
Yes.
And get to some normal living again, I know we still got a lot of recovery to do. We also have, I, I understand, three or four news channels that'll be here in the morning.
Yes, yeah, they're going to come for the.
Be doing the ribbon cutting, so if any council members, I would hope that we could be, it's a two hour event. So if you could make it possible tomorrow, it'd be nice to have support of staff and council.
Starts at Vamp Salon.
And that's the Chamber of Commerce doing the ribbon cuttings. They're doing many fast and quick reopening ribbon cuttings. And it's just a really beautiful way to say, you're still here. So I think that's really great. And then we have the tree, tree lighting, which I hope you guys all can attend and, and see as well.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to add, just, Mayor, you already indicated that, that it helps our crew, the public work staff. Having people off, the, the effort that our staff has put forward to get this going. Because the crew that you would see decorating is a crew that's been working on Haskins Bridge the last few days. So that lets us do other things that are, you know, really probably more important to get that bridge open. But those are the things that are actually helping offset our staffing right now, thank you.
That's good to hear. What time does the ribbon cutting start?
Ten AM.
And when, where's that going to start?
Starts at Vamp.
Vamp, okay, and that's by.
Vamp is over here.
Oh, it's this one, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Do we vote on that?
No, we need to vote.
Motion for item C.
I'll make a motion to approve that one, as written.
Second?
We got a motion, a second for approval of item C on the consent. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion passed.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request, because of timing issues with our city attorney. If you could adjust the agenda and, and skip forward to item six, executive session. And we'll, we'll take a quick break and go out of regular session, go into executive, go into the conference room, have our discussion, come back out.
Motion to adjourn.
We, we don't, we're not going to have, Bill, yeah, do I, do I move forward right now?
Make a motion to adjourn to E session.
Second.
Motion second to go into E session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. See you later, chief.
The session meeting is now in order, so we'll go to item three A, new business. Discussion and consideration to approve data access exchange agreement, IGA two zero two six zero zero seven nine with Arizona Department of Transportation. For connectivity to the Arizona Department of Transportation and Crash Course Records Informations System, CRIS, and the Arizona Crash Information System, ACIS, database. And to request to waive section two dash four dash ten A prior discussion rule, chief.
Good afternoon, counsel. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that Thursday afternoons are really pleasant council meetings. This is just an updated agreement with ADOT for the track systems that we currently use right now. It's in all of our vehicles. It's for traffic accidents, traffic enforcement stuff, and it's just a database that we're able to do our systems on the computer in the car. It automatically goes to ADOT and then it prints off a copy for us. So it's a standard agreement. It's an agreement that they have with all the agencies throughout the state. It's been reviewed by Bill already, and we're asking for you to waive the rule. We're kind of behind the times here because of the flooding and stuff, and we need to get it done and approve this fully today. If you have any questions, I'm happy to talk about it.
Questions for the chief?
Sounds good.
No other questions or comments. Mayor, motion to approve data access exchange agreement, IGA twenty twenty six zero zero seven nine with Arizona Department of Transportation and waive section two dash four dash ten A.
Second. Motion second for approval of item three A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thursday afternoon.
Go for it, chief.
I have four action items. A is consideration to ratify contract number CA two zero two six zero zero six one with Viking Specialty Contracting. Executed under the City of Globe's Emergency Declaration Resolution Number nineteen twelve. For the demolition abatement activities of the Silver King Building located at forty four ninety-three North Broad Street. Necessitated by the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five flood event in the amount of a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and forty cents. The project is budgeted through account number two zero eight zero zero eight zero zero eight, FEMA twenty twenty-five flood, and will be submitted for seventy-five percent reimbursement. Travis.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a contract just to ratify what was already done to the Silver King Building when it was demolished for abatement under a state contract. And so we're hoping to submit this under the FEMA reimbursement, FEMA reimbursement, FEMA reimbursement.
Does that bump up to ninety percent also if we get the FEMA, that one?
It would fall under that.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was the damaged building that was further damaged by the storm, and therefore it's a public infrastructure that was damaged.
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, if there's any...
Connie, did you want to add something?
Yes, I did. So, just in the essence of transparency, so this building, the Silver King Building, had taken on a collapse earlier in the year, last year. And we had been following a cultural and historic with shippo and a cultural with tipo. The regulations that you have to do in order to receive grant money to actually knock this down.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Connie, can you define what shippo and tipo are?
Yeah, so that's the State Preservation and Historical Association. And tipo is all of the different tribes that are interested in your area. So, it would be now known as a cultural assessment. So, those were being done at the time that this Silver King Building took on two cars and a propane tank in our flood. And so when the car was removed from the one side, it initiated another collapse, and it was a concrete collapse. So, that became a public imminent threat. So, because it's public infrastructure, we have to remove the threat from the public. So, at that point, we still had not received any grant funds, and this is very important so that our constituents know that there were not any grant funds awarded on this building. We were waiting for it, but it had not been awarded. And so, in essence, what happened is because it became a threat to the public from the flood, then we could follow the FEMA guidelines for the state of Arizona and initiate the demolition. And then we will, at this point, reimburse back at seventy-five percent. And then if the federal declaration goes in, then it's ninety percent.
You're getting really good at that.
Can you answer this, and maybe Danny can answer this? What account is twenty eighty zero eight zero zero eight? If we didn't have the hundred and four thousand to begin with to demolish this, where did it come from?
So, let's have this conversation now. This is the cash versus the budgeted. And we have a budget with an amount of money that's being spent. We are spending money that's going to be FEMA reimbursable, and there'll be other money that is spent that is not reimbursable. We're trying to get all of that reimbursed, but it's not going to go against the budget until we have it worked out, whether it's going to be reimbursed or not.
But you moved a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and forty cents for this project. Where did you move that money out of and to what account?
Okay, so the twenty eighty oh eight zero zero eight is kind of like a grant fund, because as Connie's always saying, this is a grant. So, we have to put forth the expense first, and then once we've put forth that expense, we'll get reimbursed for it. So, we'll receive that money into a grant fund of revenue once we receive reimbursement.
So, we moved the money without counsel?
We haven't moved any money.
Now, these people haven't been paid.
It's just an...
Even though it's been paid, it's basically coming from our bank account. It's not coming from our budget.
As you said earlier, Paul.
It's because the grant is a separate account.
I guess I'm just confused, because we ratify grants all the time, and we approve grants to accept the grants. But we do that before we move any money. We accept grants, and then we move the money to get reimbursed for that said grant. So, in this case, we are moving money for a grant that we might get.
Right. We're not technically moving.
And we haven't accepted it. Well, you are. You've spent money out of the ledger, out of accounts that the council hasn't approved yet.
So, this actual project to demolish this building and take the hazardous material away was actually approved by FEMA. We submitted everything. We did all of the narratives. We did talk to Gabe Levine at the state office, and he... And actually, it was happening simultaneously. As the building's coming down, we're doing all the documentation to make it right.
And so I have Tina on the phone. I'm going to put her so everybody can hear her. Okay, hang on. All right, Tina, you heard the question from the council member on the moving of the money. Go ahead.
So, we don't move money for grants.
Wait. Can you be... Oh, wait. Let me turn my volume up. Hang on. This is going to help. I'll try to get...
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, much better.
Okay, so we don't move money for grants. You have a grant budget in Fund Twenty of fifteen million. So, you have expenditure authority for all up to fifteen million. The point is that when you're spending money out of there, sometimes you're spending into the negative, right? So, we don't move money for grant. We have the expenditure authority, and what you're using is your savings account essentially. But you don't have to move any money in the budget for the expense. It's not a different account. Your grant budget has fifteen million in expenditure authority already authorized by you. So, you don't have to move any money, because the anticipation is it's going to all come back to you. What you are using is cash in your bank account, and that cash is, you know, coming from various places that you have money in your bank account. But the point is, because it's coming back, you don't have to move any money.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I guess my only other question is, if something wasn't to be reimbursed for whatever reason, such as this hundred and four thousand, what then would happen? That account would just take that negative loss?
Yes, then you would have to move it out of the grant fund to another fund at that point. You would have to... The expense would have to be journaled to another account. I'm guessing probably one of the enterprise funds. You know, because most of this is water and sewer, you know. But depending on what it is, you would say, okay, now we need to do a budget adjustment in the enterprise fund to take some of our project reserve from the enterprise fund and move it to a line to cover the unreimbursed grant funds or the match or something like that.
So, then, and Tina, hang on for a second. I'm going to take a whack at this, and you can kind of simplify it after I say it. So, we have costs that we had to incur, and we have bills that we must pay, and we've got to pay them anyway to get in there. We have no control over that. Like I say, no one's happy about what we're having to do. We were pulling this out of both our Wells Fargo Bank account and our LGIP Bank account to make these costs work. Then, there's going to be money that we're going to try to use to get reimbursed. There's expenses we can control. Once we get, if we get the FEMA declaration, we have to decide... Okay, so let's say there's 13 million for the sewer line. We're not going to have $13 million right in our bank account to get that, but we also have a lot of moving parts. We have state money that we're going after. We have federal money that we're going after that may land in here. We have loan options that we can get, and so, we're going to be balancing that. This is paying off the things that we've already incurred to get our vendors square. And then, we'll be... At the same time, we have Kelly's office and Diego's office in here for six hours, and they're going to fight for money for us. We're going to run... We're going to be looking to the state to try to get money for that. And so, we're going to try to fill that buckets in other way than our stuff. But at the end of the day, we'll shake this out. Now, Tina, when I asked you, do we need to readjust the budget because of this, can you tell the council what you told me?
You have $15 million in expenditure authority in your grant fund, so you can charge up to 15 million in your grant fund without violating your budget in any way.
Okay. And the good news is, this hap... I don't know if it's good news, but it happened early in the budget cycle. If this happened in, like, May, it would have been really bad.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong. By signing that emergency declaration, state declaration, doesn't that give the mayor the authority to sign these contracts and get the money moving and then ratify after?
Well, what it did is it allowed us to just go and not have to bring it to council and do that, because it just had to happen. But still, at the end of the day, we're responsible for that. And so, it's part of that. And you're going to see, probably Tuesday... I don't know if we have any more for Tuesday night, but we'll have other things. I think... What's the special meeting we're going to ask for?
The 18th.
We may have some more bills we need to pay for the 18th, but we don't want to be the, you know, that city that sits on our bills. We want to pay what's due, and we're having to cover the money until we can get the reimbursements. But believe me, we spend a lot of time. We're very aware. We're working with both Tina. We had a Zoom call. Tina and Dennis, I'm talking to Pat Walker, and everybody is on board that this is the proper way to handle this. And we will talk about how we fill the optional costs, but these are... To start with, these are the costs that we just, we've got to pay. Danny, did I miss anything?
Nope. I believe you got it covered.
Any other questions or comments?
So, you need a motion?
Yep.
Four A.
A, one, four A.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to go ahead and ratify the contract as stated. Do we need to go after a wave waiver?
No, it's an action item.
Okay.
Second.
No, it's an action item.
They wanted it. They wanted you to waive section two dash four dash ten A.
Why?
To get them paid because it's a ratification.
I don't believe...
It's not on, right?
No, we don't. We're okay. We don't need to waive.
Okay, as written, I'd like to go ahead and...
All right.
All right, I'll second that.
That's four A, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we get a second on that?
Mike, did you second?
Yeah, I seconded it, sir.
Got a motion second for approval of item four A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? Motion passed.
I believe by the idea that this is an emergency declaration that we're good on getting these paid. But if you want to, just for safety's sake, go in, waive the rule. There's no problem with that.
I'd like to motion to waive it.
They're watching all the city councils in Arizona because they're making their own rules.
Making their own rules. So, we'll go with the...
So, we're good.
We're good. We'll just waive them. Okay. Item four B, consideration to ratify contract number CA 2026-0064 with Viking Specialty Contracting executed under the City of Globe's Emergency Declaration Resolution 1912 for shoring activities at 410 North Broad Street necessitated by the September 26, 2025 flood event in the amount of $17,690.89. The project is budgeted through account number 208008008. DEMA 2025 flood and will be submitted for 75% reimbursement.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the project we have been talking about. This is something that is... That we're working to get this shored and made safe in coordination with the owner, and if it happens, we will submit it for reimbursement. And if there's options... We talked about this, some of the options. It's real important. But what I did want to say was, like I say, we have the authority through the attorneys because of what is at stake, both public safety and economic viability, that this is expenditure that we're legal to expend, given the details we talked about in each session. I would like to, just for progress, your choice. This may go up because there's nuances on how we shore. If there's an additional pull that is needed, there may be more. We can come back and ratify that change, or we can add a $5,000... John, what's the word? Contingency.
Contingency.
On there, and then have this covered totally. And like I say, this is where we're sitting, and it depends on what we find out tomorrow morning. So, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I request council to consider possibly adding, approving this with an additional 5,000 contingency.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this with a $5,000 contingency.
Second. And waive the...
And waive section two dash four dash ten A.
So, we have motion second for approval of item four B. Is there any... Anything you wanted to add on this, Travis?
No, sir.
Any further discussion? So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? Motion passed. Item four C is consideration to ratify contract number CS 2026-0063 with Allegiant Building LLC executed under the City of Globe's Emergency Declaration Resolution Number 1912 for emergency response heavy equipment support necessitated by the September 26, 2025 flood event in the amount of $82,250. The project is budgeted through account number 208008008. DEMA 2025 flood and will be submitted for 75% reimbursement. Any comments on that, Travis?
Just letting you know that the main activities was just heavy equipment use. They didn't do any of the hauling or towing of the vehicles and propane tanks. They just used heavy equipment to get it out of the creeks or to help get the debris out of the creek.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, because this contract is an offshoot of the Globe Emergency Declaration, if not for that declaration, this would not be happening. That is why it doesn't need to be waived because it's not the first time in council.
So, they were part of the creek removal, and off subject, we still looking at Highway 60 motors for their work in this contract also, right?
We haven't received the new invoices. I spoke with him about a week and a half ago. He was going to get those. He had heard from a couple of the insurance companies that he was going to get those new invoices. I said I would do this in the next...
Okay, not even partial payment on that, too?
So, and...
And I'm sorry, it's off subject.
No, no, it's actually not. When we get to the Apache Underground, I... Let me talk about that, because it's relevant to the Apache Underground one.
All right. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, make a motion to ratify contract number CS dash 2026 dash 0063 with Allegiant Building LLC executed under the City of Globe's Emergency Declaration Resolution 1912 for emergency response heavy equipment support necessitated by the September 28, 2025 flood event in the amount of $82,250. The project is budgeted through account number 20-80-08008. DEMA 2025 flood. Request staff to submit for 75% reimbursement and waive section two dash four dash 10A. Prior discussion ruled.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item four C. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passed. Item D, four D, is consideration to ratify contract number CS 2026-0065 with Apache Underground and Escavating LLC executed under the City of Globe's Emergency Declaration Resolution Number 1912 for emergency water and shore infrastructure repairs necessitated by the September 26, 2025 flood event for a total contractual amount of $693 and $833, and approve an initial payment for invoice number 2025 dash 10 dash 34, 361,633,000. The project is budgeted under through account number 208008008. DEMA 2025 flood and request to waive section two dash four dash 10A. Prior discussion ruled. Anything on this, Travis?
And Travis, do you want to understand the difference between the contract amount and the payment approval amount, which is lower?
Yeah, so the contract amount, since there's several invoices coming from Apache Underground at stages of the work that they are doing, there was three invoices that came in at this point. We just felt like it put under one contract since it was the same activities. But at this point, we need more detail in the actual invoices in order to be ready for FEMA, DEMA reimbursement when we make that request. So, because it's such a large amount and that we need the more detail, we told Apache Underground that we'll get this on the contract on council, and we'll pay that first invoice in which we'll need to get other details before we can start moving forward with the additional invoice payments.
They're okay with that?
They are okay with that.
So, Mayor, this is the conundrum that we're all learning. I mean, Apache Underground was there for us, and they're still there for us. They're still doing work. But they came in on a deployment, a verbal deployment to come in here, and they've really been doing, you know, yeoman's work on that. We wanted to get them paid and get the money flowing. It's only fair. But we... For us to get reimbursed, we need to have detailed billing, and that's kind of the thing, the same with action towing. We need detailed information. We want to pay this money, but we want to make sure that we're optimized on our chances of getting this reimbursed and not having it denied because of a lack of information. And this is kind of the case with Apache Underground. One of the things we're waiting, Travis did a contract for what we know so far, and that's that 700,000. But we're holding off on the payments to the other two, waiting for the invoicing to be accurate enough and detailed enough so we can survive the scrutiny of DEMA. And that's the same thing. Now, to your point, we can look and see what document we have with other vendors and see if we can use the same model of taking what is solid and reimbursable, making a partial payment on the total bill, and then do that in any other business, because we don't want our vendors sitting there waiting. They don't need to have cash flow problems.
Well, you'd think there would be a portion of the same thing as this deal, that there would be a portion of equipment usage and manpower to remove the vehicles, and that would be payable, and still waiting for the information further on the... So, we're not waiting. We're waiting on information from insurance, but there were still costs for equipment and manpower.
Oh, yeah.
Doing the job.
But DEMA and eventually FEMA wants to be the payer of last resort. If there's someone else down the line, just like we are, we were told, public infrastructure that is not covered by insurance. And, you know, many of these cars had insurance, and that would cover that. But, I mean, these are... Some are vehicles that were washed down from the Ford dealership. It's getting complicated, and staff is working very closely with the vendors to make sure. And if anybody is in a hardship situation, they come to me, and we make it happen.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the... Just the part of the equipment and manpower already. Yeah, that's billable. That's billed. I mean, this has nothing to do with the car.
We don't do labor and then, you know, equipment charges. We kind of have to do it by the task, and so it gets into the billing, the structure of the billing.
Mr. Mayor, there was a point about small cities and towns needing training. We mentioned the other day in the Tuesday conversations. We really, as a group of cities and towns, we need this type of training so we can be familiar with it before we get into another disaster. And the League of Cities and Towns, we should approach them and see if the state is willing to give us some training on this.
They've been approached.
Because we really need it. It's obvious that we're struggling with it. We're moving on it. We have certainly good personnel who can jump on tasks like this, but it would be easier if the rest of the cities and towns had some training on this before going into any event. It should be a standard training moment once a year from DEMA and the rest of them. I think that's a deficiency we need to jump on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments? Motion?
Make a motion to approve item four D as read.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item four D as read. So, we're paying which amount, or we're paying on this?
We're paying the lower amount.
361,000.
Yeah.
And then we're holding off on the six hundred...
You're approving a contract which happens to be a total of the 693.
It mentions the 361.
You're approving a subpayment of that.
It mentions it in the motion.
Yeah, okay.
And we will come back for the additional payments.
Hope so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? Motion passed. Item four E is consideration to prove the acceptance of the Haven Building from the Southern Hita County Economic Development Corporation as a condition of number MOU 240056 between the City of Globe and the Southern Hita County EDC to pursue senior housing initiatives for the use of the property. Connie?
Good morning, or afternoon. So, I've been to the podium before about the Haven Building. We've done MOUs, et cetera, et cetera. But since the shutdown, the grant is open for the Brownsville cleanup grant, but we must own the building in order to put in for it. So, we did a quick claim deed, and so now you need to formally accept this building so that we can seek grant funding.
And it meant, under the contract, it meant a two-year... I think they've had it for two years, I think.
Correct.
Just for a brief... Well, a year and a half.
Yeah.
A year and a half, okay, yeah. So, it means that criteria.
It met that criteria. So, and then I'll come before you because there's going to be a need for a public hearing about this building in order to seek the grant funding with Brownsville EPA Region Nine. And just so that you... To just refresh your memory, the invoice for the cleanup came in at 1.5 million. So, as it is, that probably has gone up some because that's an older quote, so we will be getting another quote as well.
So, this grant is just for cleanup? That's it, just to...
Just to clean up and mitigate the asbestos and the lead paint in the building and ready it for any kind of developer construction for senior housing initiatives.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this does address our... The surveys that we've seen in the past addressing the need for housing in the region, so I think that's a good thing that we can continue on this process.
Okay. Motion. Mr. Mayor, I make motion to approve the acceptance of the Haven Building from the SGCEDC as a condition of MOU 24 dash 0056 between the City of Globe and Southern Hita County Economic Development Corporation to pursue senior housing initiatives for the use of the property.
Read. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Con.
Item five, scheduling meetings, discussion of the dates for January 2026 meetings.
We're going to have another meeting next week.
What's that?
Didn't you say we were going to have another meeting next week?
Yes, we are going to ask for a daytime meeting on the 18th. Actually, our goal is to present the... Is it 24? 24 audit on the 18th.
18th.
Yeah.
Two o'clock meeting?
Yeah, well, it'd be two o'clock or noon, whichever we can make. I think two o'clock's better for some. Okay. And then, we have some scheduling issues on Tuesday. I know that Councilman Rios is doing some coaching on Tuesday, and so, Mayor, I know you have some conflicts. Is Wednesday open for him, or do we not know yet? Or we not know yet?
I'm assuming.
Yeah. So, we put this on here, we thought that Councilmember Rios might be here to help discuss this. But just beware, and we'll probably bring this back for Tuesday night, that we may have to get creative with our council dates. But we will have two nighttime meetings in January. I just don't know if they're going to be Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on the...
And I think it really, it's up to council on how they want to do that. I think we did it last year, where we moved them to a different date for a month or something.
Yeah, let's do them on Saturdays.
Oh, yeah, we'll have that.
Paul can stay, Paul can stay another day.
January, we moved to a different date, Wednesday, instead of Tuesday.
And, but I, without the Councilman Rios being here, let's hold on that, and we'll bring it back on Tuesday.
Okay.
Just beware, we may do some shoveling. And, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this, this council is so gracious in making sure that you're here for the meetings. We have the attendance, we have the flexibility, we have the daytime support of this. You're always helping us get things done by, by being flexible and adaptable. So, thank you all for that.
Is your evaluation coming up?
Motion adjourned.
Motion made.
Second?
Motion second adjourned, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, chief.